I want to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for June, Wednesday, June 4th, 2014. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Could we have roll call, please?
Foster, Lajowski, Zabella.
Abstain.
Jagiello, oh, actually, it's roll call here.
Oh, I'm here.
Zabella.
Sorry.
Jagiello, Nolan.
Here.
Chair Merk.
Here.
And Nicklin.
Yeah.
And next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Nicklin, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public communications, as time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting, for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I don't see Mr. Ulrich here, so we may not have any public comment. We will move on. Next item is the consent item. The consent calendar is approved by a roll call vote in one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar, considered as a separate item. The only item we have is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, May 21st, 2014. And I need a motion to accept that.
I will make a motion that we adopt the regular meeting, or minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, May 21st, 2014.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. And could we have a roll call, please?
Lajowski.
Aye.
Zabella.
Abstain.
Jagiello.
Abstain.
Nolan.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Abstain.
Does that actually pass?
Yes.
Only had two yes votes. All right. Next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. I think I'll start at my left and we'll go around through the...
I'm aware of the site and visited the site.
All right. I have been by the site a couple times, both on the bike path side and on the street side.
And I too have visited the site, both from the bike path and the street and in the parking lot.
I've been at the site numerous times.
I have as well.
I've been at the site as well, from the bike path and from the street side.
Thank you. Next item is the Municipal Advisory Council Planning Commission Liaison Report. Commissioner Nicklin is scheduled for the next meeting, which is, might be June 16th. You might want to check with him because they said they didn't have a lot of items on their agenda.
Were they just meeting quarterly now?
Well, they were talking about it at the last meeting because they had, they had very few commissioners in attendance and they had only one item on their agenda, so they thought they might, so it may be a while before you have to actually go. Now we get to the public hearing items, and we have only one public hearing item. It is number two, conditional use permit, CUP 1401, and design review permit, DRP 1405, for Topa Mountain Winery use of the property as a boutique winery, including onsite grape processing and storage, and remodel of existing structures located at 821 West Ojai Avenue. Could we hear from staff on this, please?
Yes. Press power? Press it. Okay, well...
We wait for technology.
Yeah. I turned it on. Yeah. Okay. All right, well, I could start talking.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. As Chair Merk said, the item before you is a request for a conditional use permit and design review permit for the use of the property as a boutique winery, including onsite grape processing and storage and remodel of the existing structures on site. The applicant is requesting, on behalf of the property owner, to develop the use as a theme, in the theme of a tourist destination, and that would be through three phases. Tonight's meeting is, and request for permits, is only for Phase One of the project. And Phase One of the project will be the processing of the grapes and fermenting of the grapes, and that's what they're requesting for permit tonight. The subject property has been vacant for a number of years, and, let's see, let me Has been vacant for a number of years and fallen into a state of disrepair. So the applicant is proposing to demolish the dilapidated wooden structure here, I've got an arrow pointing to it, remodel and update the plumbing and electrical for the concrete masonry building, which is this building, whoops, pointer works everywhere but on the screen. Okay, this building right here to the left of the screen. In addition to that, some plumbing and electrical work on the interior of the building and an access door along the south, south side of the building. Most people define a boutique winery as a small production, artisanal, or locally grown. The Topa Mountain Winery is considered small production. It gets its grapes, most of its grapes, from locally harvested vineyards, including the property owner, Mr. Guerra's Three Acre Vineyard in Upper Ojai. The wine tasting use, which is going to be part of the later phases, Phase Two and Phase Three, is going to be considered by staff to be a small production, as it will only be producing 2,200 cases of wine per year. The applicant proposes, proposes, I'm sorry, the applicant, the wine produced on site is proposed and intended only for direct sale to its customers, not for wholesale shipment. But like I said, that's going to be part of a later phase. Tonight's phase is just dealing with the wine processing and also demolition of that wood building and remodel of the masonry building. The wine processing will take place within the masonry block building and concrete pad. So this picture shows you, this is looking east onto the project site. The masonry block building is on the left, and you can see a little bit of the former Ford dealership showroom to the left. That's the white, white building. The masonry block building is where the wine processing will take place, and then just south of that will be, where you see a little bit of the metal roof, will be the concrete pad where some of the wine processing will also be. The purpose for requesting the wine processing portion of the project first is due to the typical processing of grapes to make wine. With this September harvest, the crush occurs, and this is the time when the grapes are prepared and made ready for the fermentation process, which takes about one to two years. And, excuse me, during that fermentation process, the applicant will be coming back to modify tonight's request to allow for the wine tasting and to propose the site plan for the rest of the project site. The subject property is located in the C1 commercial, general commercial zone, and the uses in that zone and in the land use for the property allow for commercial retail type uses, as well as uses that are related to tourist serving. However, the proposed wine, white, small winery and processing use is not listed in the tables for permitted uses of this zone. So that's why tonight the applicant's requesting a conditional use permit, which the code allows, so that the Planning Commission can find the use is not more detrimental or objectionable than uses that are permitted on the site. So that's one of the findings you'll be making for the wine processing as an ancillary use to the future wine tasting use that's going to be on the site. So to assure that the full use of the site is for wine tasting and food service in the future, with ancillary use of wine processing and storage, staff has incorporated into this request for conditional use permit, a sunset date, and the applicant has agreed to that, and you'll see on your resolution, the conditions of approval that state that because the wine processing happens during the crush season, which is September and October, that this conditional use permit will end November 1st, unless the applicant has come back to modify before that time, submitted request to modify the application to allow for the other uses on site. So I can explain that if anyone has questions. I made that kind of confusing. I just want to show you some pictures. Actually, before I go to the pictures, I wanted to point out the supplemental memo that you should have on your dais there. And this is because the applicant, the original project description...
There's some actual supplemental memo for...
Okay, if anyone's interested in looking at the supplemental memo, it's on the desk over there. And this is because the applicant submitted a revised project description on May 28th with a couple changes, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear in what they're requesting. One of the changes was the proposed hours of operation. This is pretty minor. Originally, they had said during September and October that they would be open 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and they just want to make sure that, make sure it's clear that they're going to be from Monday to Saturday. I think I mentioned earlier that the wine sales, originally, it was interpreted that the wine sales, there would be no shipment of the wine from the site, but actually, the applicant would like to, would like to do direct sale to his consumer, but not the wholesale market, so just to make that clear. As for the wine processing, originally, the application and project description suggested that the wine processing would take place with inside the concrete masonry building. The applicant is requesting that he be allowed to use the concrete pad behind the building as well during the months of September and October. And that concrete pad is covered with an existing 12-foot-high metal roof, so the processing will take place under that roof. I believe the stainless steel, stainless steel holding tanks are eight feet in height, but the applicant will be able to address that. We have not gotten any cut sheets or pictures of how that equipment will look and how tall it is. But from what I understand, the applicant has said it's eight feet high, and the metal roof that's out there right now is 12 feet high. So this is one of the major changes to the project description, is the use of that outdoor area. So the applicant, along with that, is proposing to fence in the rear of the property with screening, a chain link fence and screening, so that the view of the processing equipment is not seen from adjacent properties. So in response to the changes in the project description, the staff has added two conditions at the request of the applicant. There's a change to condition number five, which I've outlined here, a strike through, and condition number six. So I'm going to go through the pictures here. This is looking east onto the project site from the adjacent property. This is looking north towards Ojai Avenue. From the bike trail, you see the fencing that's out there right now, and the red structure on the left side is a shed that will remain. It's about 580 square feet, and after the months of September and October, the wine processing equipment will be moved into that shed for storage. And this is a look at the masonry building where, in the concrete pad where the wine processing is proposed. And this is looking southwest onto the property. You see the showroom on the right side, and then the masonry building, and then the other structure. And that is the end of the pictures and the slideshow. The additional information that's in your staff report goes over development standards and features that are required per the code, and what the applicant is proposing, and whether it conforms or not. A majority of that will have to do with when the project comes back to the Planning Commission, in terms of demolishing structures, rebuilding, and site design, and I think that that's, I wanted to put it in here now, but I think it's more appropriate to review and look over that for Phase Two and Phase Three of the project, because what they're proposing could change between now and then. That completes staff's presentation, oh, I'm sorry, environmental review. The project qualifies for a Class III categorical exemption from environmental review per the California Environmental Quality Act. And Class III exemptions include the installation of small new equipment and facilities in a small structure, and the conversion of an existing structure from one use to another, where only minor modifications are made to the exterior of the structure. So that concludes my presentation tonight, and the applicants in the audience, so you can ask me questions, or if there are questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for staff?
Are they still, with moving it outside, moving the processing outside, are they not subject to CEQA or something done?
And, yes. That was one of the questions that staff had in terms of any air quality issues, any noise issues, any aesthetic issues. This, this new project description came after we had already written the report and did the categorical exemption, and the item, as you know, was continued from May 21st to tonight. So that's, I guess, still up for discussion at tonight's meeting, as to whether they can still be categorically exempt, or because of the new project description, or revised project description, will we need to take it back and further review it under CEQA? Because we did not have this information before, so we couldn't address the air quality, noise, or aesthetic issues.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, so at this point, is it appropriate for us to just go ahead and have the applicant present or answer any questions, and then we can decide where to go from there?
Sure, because I think it's, yeah, I think that's a good idea. What, when we got the revised project description, I did suggest that, you know, we don't know what any of that equipment's going to look like. And they suggested that they'd be bringing in some photos or cut sheets, so I haven't seen them, so...
Okay. So, okay, so probably end up continuing, but we could actually hear from them.
Let's hear from the applicant. Do you guys have a presentation to make?
Yeah.
Great.
Good evening. My name's Josh Griffin. I'm the project manager for Cornerstone Architects, representing the owner, who's also in attendance, so when it comes to technical questions, I'm going to defer to him. But let me start by giving an overview, because this whole process is going to be a multi-year process, and we've been working on it for over a year already. The vision that the owner is trying to develop with us at Cornerstone Architects is this idea of a boutique winery, a destination spot in Ojai, in an area that could be considered right now in blight. Obviously, it's, looking at the pictures, you know, it's rundown, it's been that way for years. I think just about anybody in the world would want that place to be improved, and we're hoping to do that. What the owner's trying to develop right now is a, basically a place where he can process winery, the wines, using, like was mentioned, the large portion of locally harvested grapes, and then eventually, Phase Two and Three, be able to provide a wine tasting in the same, same location, in order to, to bring his products to, to the outer world. What he's trying to establish is a sense of place here. Eventual, and really, you can't separate what we've proposed for Phase One from what the end product's going to look like. What we want to end up with is a beautiful setting, beautiful landscape, courtyard, beautiful architecture, the whole nine yards, and we did include the site plans for the other two phases, the future two phases, so you guys can get a first glimpse of what it's going to look like. We have been developing the elevations, and everything's, everything we've been developing up until now has been with the future in mind. So what we're trying to do is obviously bring a beautiful project eventually to this, to this rundown area. Tonight, though, all we're looking at is Phase One, and Phase One is, is pretty bare bones. It's basically what we're looking for is the minimum we can do to get the grapes harvested in time. The harvesting period is September and October. It's coming up, it's right around the corner. We need to get everything turned around, the construction done, all in time for that. So that's why we separated it out into phases. Obviously, we're going to do what's required, and we know that within that six month, or six month period before November, we're going to have to turn around the design review for the next phase. We're planning to do that as soon as possible as well, because we want to get that ball rolling as well. In terms of what's actually to be done on the property for Phase One, like was mentioned, we are going to demolish that back portion, the wood portion of the building that's falling down. I think the arrow was on the wrong building in the first photo. That was actually a CMU building. Yeah, so you can't actually see it in this view, it's actually behind the showroom, but you can see it definitely from the bike path. That's where it's very visible. So Phase One involved demolishing that. We'd be leaving the storeroom, the showroom, as is for now, for Phase One, just to minimize the impact on the project up front. But we would be remodeling the CMU portion of the building. Our proposed finishing would be basically, there's a couple doors you can see in that picture that were originally there. We'd be infilling those and plastering that whole face to clean that face up, but the CMU on the sides and the rear, we'd just be painting that to clean it up. Due to fire damage of the roof, we're going to have to replace the roof, but it's basically, we're going to keep the same slope and the same roof style right there. We'll dress it up a little bit with some tile, just to clean it up. But that's basically the exterior remodel. In the rear, like was mentioned, there will be some processing on that concrete pad underneath the covered patio right there. That will be screened off by a six-foot fence from the bike path. Obviously, you cannot see that from the street, and so there'll be a fence surrounding the backyard area there to prevent anyone from seeing it, any neighbors. The equipment is roughly eight feet tall, but because the bike path's actually a couple feet below this property, a six-foot fence will actually give, you know, a net of eight feet, which should cover any equipment out there. I do have, actually, I did bring pictures of something similar to the equipment. I don't know if I can pass those around or show. This is not the exact equipment, but it does give an idea of the extent of the equipment. I think there's still some clarification going on, on exactly what the process of the wine making that will take place inside the building, and what will take place outside the building, and I, you know, I'll let the experts talk about exact process. But basically, those are the three pieces of equipment that will be used outside of the building in those two months of September, October. None of them are, they're roughly eight feet tall. There are some other things mentioned in some of the reports that are actually, like the vats are only going to be inside the building, and that's where, you know, the wine will be storing to go through its normal fermentation process. But those are the only three pieces of equipment that will be used outside the building during September, October, except for minor other equipment. So I just wanted to clarify that, that's basically the extent of the outside process. After that, it gets pumped inside, and everything else gets taken inside. So hopefully, that kind of clarifies the equipment that's being used. Visually, again, it's roughly eight feet tall at the most, so any fencing we use will hide that. The other issue that was addressed was the, the two issues that came up were the air quality, and we did actually present, I don't know if staff got a copy of the findings from the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District. They're supposed to be in the package that we gave to you. I'm not sure if it got in there or not, but I will give this as well. And basically, this letter states that the impact due to the processing there is going to be negligible, and doesn't qualify for any kind of extra measures to be taken. But you can take a look at that letter, which should hopefully clarify the issue of air pollution, even with the equipment outside. And then the last point that was made was about the noise factor possibly impacting the environment. And this equipment that you're looking at, this is just representation, because this equipment is actually custom-made, coming in, it hasn't been built yet, it hasn't been delivered yet. We have been told by the people making it that the noise is no louder than any kind of air conditioning unit or any kind of standard noise like that, so there shouldn't be a noise issue. But we're more than willing, I think the condition's already in there, that if the noise does become an issue, we will have to mitigate that, either by moving the equipment inside, which can be done. It's because of the height of the equipment and the height of the ceiling inside, it makes it a lot more difficult, so they'd obviously prefer to do it outside. But as an option, if the noise is an impact, we can, we could move it inside. And that kind of, I think, hopefully addresses any questions about, about that staff had raised, the conditions. But I want to emphasize that, again, this, what we're looking at for tonight is a temporary measure, just to get through processing. We'll be back in a few months to make everything, you know, to present the project in a more cohesive manner. And that's, like I said, I have the owner here, if you have any, and actually, his winemaker and some of his crew. So if there are any technical questions, or if you just want an education about wine making, he's available to answer all this.
Thank you, Josh. Do we have any questions from Josh?
Some questions. Hi, Josh. Where's the, where is the wine currently being processed?
Well, this is, I mean, right now, he has actually an operation at his house in Upper Ojai.
Upper Ojai.
But he's basically outgrown that, because it's basically out of his house, more or less. So he's moving it down here, also to give a more public presence to it.
Is the processing part of this equation going to be marketed as kind of part of the tourist ambiance, like the, watching the grapes being made into wine?
Well, yeah, I mean, that kind of starts addressing the Phase Two, but if you have, look at the site plan in Phase Two, you'll see that he's planting grapes, and the property's part of the landscape. And so there will be, you know, some, some edu, I don't know if he's planning, you know, tours of the wine-making process, but I think it'll be definitely some kind of an education going on in terms of the wine-making process. Obviously, he's bringing the processing right next to where he's going to be giving the tasting. It's going to be, you know, it'll be very public in that sense, or available to the public in some form. So, yeah. Yes, to answer your question. But that is part of Phase Two, again, when we start getting into the development of the tasting room and the other, the other issues that will come up.
Any other questions? Yeah, was it?
Why did it change? Why did we have this last-minute change with moving things outside?
I think it was more of a confusion between us and the planning staff, because our intention had never changed, it was just, you know, filling out the applications, and once we, and mislabeling some things or something like that, that came up. But our intention had never actually changed. It didn't move from one thing to another, it's just a matter of clarification going back and forth. And because of, you know, we're trying to hurry up the process just to get through this processing thing, so some things might have dropped in that regard.
Okay, so maybe this is a technical question for Mr. Guerra, but is it one of each of these things, and these are eight feet tall?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, yeah, there is one, one of each of those, and they're designed to catch grapes, to catch, really, the only byproduct of making this wine is a thing called must. And so one of the reasons for it being eight feet high is we can have a container underneath to catch everything, which then goes up to my vineyard, you know, it gets composted and then spread out in the vineyard. But you're right, it's, it, everything will look like one of the, there should be three pieces of equipment that look like those.
And then, did you say there's tanks as well?
There will be tanks that the wine is stored in and settled in, but that, that all happens inside.
Inside.
So the processing is a combination of what's happening inside and outside. So the grapes get delivered, they go through the crusher, destemmer, through that sorting table, and, or actually, they go through the hopper, through the sorting table, into the crusher, destemmer. They go into a bin, which then goes inside for the fermentation. So the operation of these pieces of equipment is only in the months of September and October, and it's only for a couple of hours a day. And then everything else just gets moved inside, and that's where, you know, the majority of, you know, the oper- And then, everything else just gets moved inside, and that's where, you know, the majority of, you know, the operation takes place. All the barrels stay in there. The other reason for the CUP, the, you know, the description, from harvest to getting a bottle of red wine for tasting takes anywhere from two to three years. And so, with this harvest coming up, it'll be three years for the red grapes. And so, that's why we wanted to get this first phase through, so we could get the processing started.
And what sort of truck traffic, I mean, is it 10 trucks a day or one truck a week?
It's maybe one truck a week. The only thing that, it'll be a truck with, you know, a ton or two of grapes coming in, and then it goes away. It's not a high-traffic kind of business.
And then, I know this isn't before us, but I'm just sort of curious, since this is gonna become ancillary to what your later phases are, what's the vision for the restaurant, for the food service?
We're looking at sort of a deli pizza oven kind of thing with a full kitchen. So, maybe, you know, have some special events, catered events there. But yeah, the idea is, I mean, it's not so much the food, but the tasting. You know, we're gonna have a lot of outdoor seating. You know, we have, I think, the best view of the Topas. I think you saw it in one of these pictures in Ojai. And so, we're trying to create a place where you can sit outdoors, enjoy some good wine, listen to some music, and just enjoy your weekends.
Thank you.
And as far as the restaurant down the road, is that a lunch and dinner that you're looking at?
Not sure yet is the real answer. More than likely, it's not gonna be dinner. In fact, 90% sure it's not dinner. Mostly, it's there just to support the wine tasting. You know, finger foods, cheese crackers, you know, cheese plates, fruit, flatbread, pizzas, those kinds of things.
Thank you.
So, my understanding is, I'm making sure I get this right. So, you're gonna install this equipment and use it, like, in September, October this year? And then, you're gonna come back to us in November, and we're gonna talk about the next phase. So, I'm thinking at that point, we will have had experience of the equipment actually being in use on the site. Am I correct in that?
They, yeah, well, we, yeah, we won't use it before September, October, because we need the grapes, and they don't ripen until September or October. But what we were planning on doing is, if it's for the noise issues, having those tested as soon as they're delivered. I think they're delivered, you know, July, early August. And so, we will get the answer to the decibel question. And then, whatever we need to do, whether it's, you know, as Josh mentioned, put it indoors, or if it's not an issue, leave them outside. But once again, they're only running for an hour or two a day. And then, after that, they go into the big shed. They're out of the way. They're all stainless steel. You know, they're custom-made in Italy. So, they're specialty pieces of equipment that actually are like pieces of artwork. So, it's not like you're gonna be looking at rusty, you know, rundown equipment. It's very expensive, and we will maintain them and keep them, you know, looking really nice.
I've got a question. Is it possible to get the noise information sooner than you installing it? Because I know, I think, personally, I would like to see what that noise factor is.
Right, so that's, as soon as... Yeah, as soon as the equipment gets here, we will test it, have someone, you know, certified to test the decibels, and then, we'll relay that to you. And then, you know, hopefully, you know, what we have been told, there are no cut sheets, because these are all custom-made, different sizes, different, you know, shapes, configurations. They're all made in Europe, and so, they don't have a standardized cut sheet. But what they have told us is that the noise levels are minimal and, you know, less than an air conditioner. So...
Okay. Thank you.
I have heard this equipment being used and seen it being used, and it's like Josh mentioned, it's almost like an air conditioner. It's not much louder than that.
Okay. Well, other questions?
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you clarifying the changes in here prior to the approval. I know it's good to see that up front. But I have a question about what happens after the November sunset? Like, what, what happens if, and maybe that's a question for staff, but what happens if, I mean, what is, what if?
So, they have a sunset date if you flip to the resolution. Condition, condition one speaks to the sunset date of this CUP in failure, which is November 1st. Failure to submit for Phase Two of the project will result in the CUP for wine processing to become null and void November 2nd. Should the permit become void by this condition, the applicant shall submit a plan to vacate, this is condition number two now, shall submit a plan to vacate the premises by November 15th. So, they wouldn't be able to do wine process, I mean, they wouldn't be able to do wine processing, and they would have to move all the equipment and everything out of there by November 15th. That's if they have not submitted for their future phase.
And just if I could address that issue, as Josh mentioned, we've been working on these plans for a year. You're not gonna get the plans November 1st. You will be getting those shortly after this meeting, you know, in the next month. Not to put pressure on them, but, you know, the drawings, the plans are, you know, they just need to be finalized. But the whole concept has been put together, and so, that should not be an issue. I'm not worried about it, hopefully.
Any other questions?
Are you the owner of the property?
Yes.
Oh, good.
All right. So, I do have a question, and this gets back to the sound, and I'm hoping that it's only the sound of an air conditioner, because I think it's a great project. But in the event that it's not, are you planning to do your testing on the site here with the equipment?
Yes.
And then, you're gonna have a specialist come and then come back with the report?
And do, I think, measure the decibels at 10 feet. And so, if they don't qualify for that, we move everything inside.
Right, okay. Yeah, I think another issue was possibly smell, and then, will the neighbors be notified?
Well, I just wanna make this really, this really clear that staff here has real concerns about, we're not advocating for issuing a building permit to an applicant and then finding out that his equipment violates. There's an issue with what's being discussed here. What I talked about with the architect was that prior to us issuing a building permit, that's the only leverage we have. And once we've issued a building permit for him to go ahead, we have no control over what that, you know, we'd be putting him in abatement. So, we need to have some kind of control where, and what I spoke to Mr. Foster about was him submitting cut sheets or some kind of equipment, which is what we're normally used to getting, okay? A manufacturer, regardless if the equipment is custom-made for somebody, there has to be some kind of analysis done prior to us issuing something for him to install it. It doesn't work that you install something and then tell me how loud it is, unless for some reason you want to put some kind of burdensome condition on him that says, "By the way, you're gonna install that, and now, we're just gonna, we're gonna, you're gonna have to cease and desist if it's too loud." I'm just not sure that everybody understands that, that that's not the usual course of action.
Actually, I did understand, and that's why I was asking him what they were intending to do, because I didn't think that would be the trajectory going.
Maybe I can clarify a little bit that issue, that these pieces of equipment are all on wheels. You plug them in, you roll them. So, if they're not being installed outside, there's, you know, we're putting them where we want to put them. And so, in the event, you know, we could go the flip side, we will start with them inside, and upon proving that they're less than 60 decibels, then we get permission to use it outside. If that, you know, helps with the concern, then there is no issue.
Well, don't we also have, I guess, the leverage of Phase Two, right? Or the November sunset, correct?
The sunset would be something, yes, but, you know, so, I just, I feel like there's, I just don't want to get in a catch-22 situation. So, you know, the conditions, we try to be very favorable about the way that we handle this. So, the condition is that they have to submit by November 1st. That doesn't mean that, you know, it may take a while for him to submit and be deemed incomplete, go through the processing. It may require that he do an initial study. So, it's not gonna be instantaneous that he goes from, I mean, hopefully, he'd be done and complete. But, you know, there's due process. I mean, things could get appealed, et cetera, et cetera, you know. We might roll all the way around over to the next season, you know. I don't want to give anybody the misimpression that this is gonna go like Domino's, you know. We hope it will, but it might not. My concern is that then we can stop, I mean, we can stop him from getting a final and actually operating if he wants to install the equipment. I'm just hesitant. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this is, this might put us in a very awkward position of having to actually stop a business owner, if that, you know, because this, we're doing things without really knowing how loud this equipment is. The reason it was gonna go before was because it was inside a building, and that attenuates the sound and the odor and the aesthetics. So, at this point, and this is the first time we've seen the equipment, and we haven't seen how it's gonna look screened or how much of it sticks above. And in addition to the equipment, as explained to Mr. Foster, is that sometimes there's ancillary noise, you know, created. I mean, maybe there's a truck beeping, backing up, maybe there's things banging, maybe there's this or that. I mean, all of this now is going to occur outside. And so, the idea of it being compatible in the C1 and the adjacent uses was it being all inside. So, I just want to make it very clear that the conditions and the project description say that they can operate this processing all day long. Their project description does not say one or two hours a day, okay? So, if somebody comes and complains, and this is the administrative record, regardless of what he says right now at the podium, unless you change those conditions and say, "All right, we're going to make these noise issues, you know, you can process outside, and we're gonna give you a one- or two-hour window a day," end of story. I mean, I just want to make it very clear that what you're approving is what you're approving. Then, when we start to get complaints, staff really has to go by these approvals. So, my only point of being very clear about it is, is because we've had a number of issues in this community over the last six months of commercial uses interfacing with their surrounding uses and how that really works in the community. And so, the idea of this was, in the C1 district, this was gonna be inside. And that's why we want to make it very clear. So, like I said, I tried to work out this, and the condition says, prior to final approval of the applicant, so, he'll get a building permit to install his equipment, and we won't let him operate. We won't let him go. That means he's got all of his money and effort and capital, and you've got somebody angry that can't get in if he can't meet the performance standards. So, just want to make that really clear, where we're going with this.
So, it sounded like you were saying you could install this equipment indoors to begin with?
That's correct. And in fact, you know, it's, the word install, these things are appliances, basically. You plug them in and roll them wherever you want. So, and, you know, we will have...
So, you wouldn't have a problem if we said the equipment has to be indoors to start with, and then we could go from there?
No. And then, we prove to you that it's under the decibel limit, and we can roll them out.
Good. Thank you.
Right, and we would ask that, we would ask at that condition read that he proved to the community development director, you know, to the satisfaction, since he doesn't need to come back formally before, staff should be able to, you know, read the report that he gets and make an analysis.
Okay. I'm happy. I don't know about anybody else. Well, thank you. This is a public hearing, and we'd welcome any comments. Anybody want to speak on this subject? I don't see anyone. Could we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Discussion and/or a motion?
I have a question. As, I know that a large part of Phase One is the demolition of 2,000, however big the building is, 2,000 square?
Yes.
I also believe that the city of Ojai has a, something on the books about 50% of demolition should be recycled, construction demolition. Is that true?
That's, I think, a state law.
So, how is that enforced?
We have paperwork that we give to the applicant that they have to fill out and turn it in to us, and then, the building officials check it out before we sign off on it.
So, that's a condition of occupancy?
And actually, a condition of a building permit. I mean, it's not really a condition, you know, they just make sure, but it's part of the building, every building permit that's issued.
Okay. Other questions, discussion?
Go ahead.
I'm happy.
So, it sounds like what we're saying is, generally, at this point, if the equipment was installed indoors with the condition that they supplied all of the noise, the sound, any reports that would be required, we could go through with it and let them have it indoors. And when they presented if it met the standards for the city, at that point, they possibly could move it outside. Of course, we'd have to have the photos and see what all the equipment looks like and with the fencing, because we haven't seen any of that yet either. So, we'd build that in as a condition, all of the items.
I think you need to, you need to look at the Page Two of two of the amended conditions. I attempted to give Mr. Foster some ideas of how, you know, I mean, obviously, they're putting themselves in a position where, you know, they have to provide screening. And like I said, most of this stuff, if you're, if we're doing it after the fact, we would want something in the condition that says, "To the satisfaction of we're qualifying it."
I have a question. Would the screening at the back be screened with plants too, besides fencing?
It's just a fence right here.
It's just a fence at the back?
Initially, just a fence, and then, the plants will come, oh, sorry. I don't do this very often. Okay, so initially, just the fence with either the slats or mesh going across. It'd be a chain link, because it's temporary. With the submission of Phase Two and Three, we have a pretty, you know, elaborate plan for plants. And so, at that point, you'll see what they're, what they are.
Thank you.
And I just want to clarify a little bit. Because it's a phased project, you know, staff worked with the applicant to make sure that we weren't having him do improvements that then would be removed. I mean, the idea is to build on it, not have him build something and then tear it down and go back at it. So, that's why we're in agreeance with him that, you know, the screening that needs to be there needs to be sufficient to screen the equipment, but we don't want to go beyond that until he goes through Phase Two, so that he's just moving forward with his project.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'm, in case we go to the next step of, are we talking about adopting what's here? And do we, are we clear with what's here? Because, and I'm confused about what we're adopting now, given that we've got to change, and I don't want it to get confused. And now, we're talking about everything being inside, and I don't know what's...
So, I drafted, so we have the resolution that was drafted prior to their revision of the project description, and that's what you have in your staff report with the conditions of approval. That's part of the staff report. The changes per the revisions to the project description are changes to Condition Number Five and Condition Number Six. However, with what we were just discussing in terms of starting the equipment inside, moving it outside, I started to work on Condition Number Five to read, to read, "Any equipment that is utilized for processing of grapes will need to meet noise ordinance standards and provide decibel ratings by qualified engineer to the satisfaction of the community development director prior to any processing equipment to be utilized outside of the building and visible from any rights of way." But, I mean, we can make changes to that language if it doesn't meet.
That sounds reasonable. I don't know what else you'd want them to do, if they're gonna supply...
If they're going to supply the report before they bring it outside, what else is there to do?
I think that's pretty much it. I think that they need, you know, there's, there's three things that we're concerned about. One, they need to make sure it's aesthetically pleasing, it's in a C1 zone, it's not, and this isn't an industrial zone. So by putting it in a C1 zone, we just want everybody to understand that sometimes there's heightened conditions that are placed on it for compatibility, that's why it's a use permit. So we want to make sure that, like, I know it could be part of the ambiance, that is a very expensive and nice looking stainless steel equipment, I totally agree with that. We just want to make sure that it's, you know, we don't have forklifts out there or other ancillary things, right? So we're like, one, we want it to be screened. Two, we want to make sure that it's not noisy, and three, we want to make sure that processing outside doesn't increase the amount of odors. If you look at the Air Pollution Control District letter, while they were exempt from the, from the boilers and et cetera, et cetera, it does say, at the very last paragraph, "All this facility may be exempt from the permit requirements of Rule 10, the facility must still comply with Regulations 4 and Rule 50 and Rule 51 nuisance." It's generally, when you're doing manufacturing, and I think I explained this before, that some people find an odor particularly pleasant, and some people find an odor particularly not pleasant. So it's generally accepted that you cannot create odors that go off your property, you know. So we just want to make sure that, and I've talked with the applicant, and like you said, he removes the, the byproduct. You know, we want to make sure the byproduct is removed and that that, because the processing is going on outside, that that's an everyday thing, that that byproduct is removed, you know, so we don't get rodents, we don't get odor. Some people might think it's really nice, that's true. So those are just the kind of things that we're worried about, it, because now it's outdoors. So that's the only thing that isn't on one of these conditions is, you know, that outdoor storage or processing can't create odors. But, and like I said, I don't know, if you, if we don't condition it to do that, and we get complaints, we're going to be back up in front and with another neighborhood issue, because at some point, people are not going to think this all the way through, they're not going to understand that while there's wine processing, and that's really nice, and this is an event place, et cetera, et cetera, if you are in your home or close by or in a business and you're smelling grapes all the, it may be offensive to you, it just might. So I think that's the only other thing that, and you just need to make a decision on the odor proportion of it. The equipment can go outside, and now he's processing outside, and I don't know how, because of the change in how the, this project was presented to us at last minute, we don't really know what they're doing with that byproduct and how long it's sitting out there. And it does leak grape juice, if you've ever, I mean, I guess some of you know the experience, but it does, and so that does produce an odor, which then I might also encourage vermin. So with it being inside, it wasn't such a worry, that's, that's, and I'll leave it at that.
I have a question. You know, to a degree, I almost could see this being a continued item. If, if we decided to continue it, how soon could you, the applicant, come back and meet all these topics that we're discussing this evening with actual information and provide that to us so that we could have, make a real solid decision? I feel in a way that there's a little bit of ambiguity, and then another concern that I have is, let's say, you know, you go ahead, you get your equipment, it's inside, for whatever reason, you know, it comes back to us and we said, you know, that's not going to work outside. Are you prepared to keep all of your operation inside if we denied you having it outside? I'm not saying that we would, but in the event that we did, I'm just kind of thinking ahead.
Really, since everything's only taking place for this first phase, we're going to go through the September, October crush period, we're going to have our, by then, we'll have designed our second phase, which would take into account any noise issues that may have come up during this first harvest, or, you know, before we get the equipment. When we get the equipment in July, we'll know what the noise levels are like, and we'll be planning for that in Phase 2. So at the worst-case scenario, we, we'd just be indoors September and October for this first crush, and then we'll have mitigated it for our second phase. So the, the owner is more than willing to do this for, basically, his whole goal is just get this thing quickly, because I need, it's a time crunch with this, getting everything done by September. If we continue it, it's going to put a huge time crunch on him, because he needs to get everything going as soon as possible to, to make it in time for this crush. So hopefully that answers that.
Thank you.
I got a question. Is, is it faulty thinking to, for me to think that in subsequent phases for when they come back, as you're saying, that we can't address these things? Is that?
That was my understanding of it. This just carries us through November.
Right, and I.
And even before then, they're going to come back.
I think, I think you can, I mean, it's, I guess what I was trying to explain, and what Heather was trying to explain, is that it's better to leave it inside for now, if applicant is willing to do it, and just address the outdoor portion of it at the second phase. That just makes more sense that way than to do it in reverse, to say, well, let's go ahead and let them operate outside, and then if we have an unknown, and then there's issues with whatever, we're stuck, I, I just really hesitant to ever have to go out and put a brand-new business owner in some kind of situation where it's not working for them. So if he's indicating it'll work for you, for him, indoors, I think we should move that way first, with the option for him to go outdoors if he demonstrates this. That totally makes sense to me, that way, we're covered. If somebody complains or there's an issue, we can say, well, you know, it didn't really work, I'm sorry, you got to go back inside. Instead, the other way around, where he's outside and then, you know, I mean, I just don't know, maybe I'm not making sense, maybe making it more complicated. There are just some concerns, because we did deem it exempt from CEQA, and, you know, we're not, we're not mitigating, you know. Normally, you would have mitigations on these things that said, you can't create secondary odors, you know. And so he has to be compliant the way he is now, and that just makes it a little bit more difficult, you know. And like I said, we just had, staff just didn't have any time to look, I mean, this all stuff was handed out tonight. So I just want to make it very clear that, you know, staff, staff presentation was, and the staff report was based on it being inside, and we feel really comfortable getting it approved that way. We feel less comfortable with it going outside for various reasons that we've articulated. We just want to make it very clear that it, it could end up in another one of those situations where it's just not compatible. Remember, this isn't an expressly permitted use in that zone district. The conditions that were placed on it was conditions that we felt made it compatible with that district. And that's where the rub comes. If it was a permitted use and he was in an industrial zone district, I don't think we would have a problem. They're noisier by nature, and they, and you assumed odors will be in those, in those districts. Food processing and all those other anc, those other types of uses that are similar to his are traditionally allowed, and even in Ojai, are, are expressly permitted in the M1. So that's the only reason I think that staff's a little bit uncomfortable with it.
But if it was, I think we're assuming that the equipment's going to be indoors to start with, that that's what we're going to approve here?
Well, I'm, I actually think completely opposite of you. I think it's a great opportunity to witness what it would be like to be outside. I mean, it's a great experiment, and especially if we can address this issue multiple times in the future. He's going to go ahead and do the noise analysis, he's going to supply the things. I would personally like to see it operate outside and see what we're, we're doing with, instead of just worrying about things that may not exist. I mean, the pizza may smell more than the wine, I mean, come on.
And I'm, and I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm only trying to explain to you that from staff's, staff has presented, you can, you know, you've, obviously, the commission can do whatever they want to do. Our, my, our job is to highlight and present what we think are the issues, and that's all I'm doing. I, I, I have never seen in all my years of planning someone do this at the last minute. It's very unusual to be putting in equipment, changing a project description, and handing out equipment at a meeting. That's all I'm trying to say. So, you know, certainly more than within your power and your duties to do, and so I'm only trying to explain it from a, from a professional planner's perspective, so that it's on the record that staff did not, that staff did educate you on what the issues were.
Well, and given that you can just roll it out, I think, no, but what I'm saying is, I think it's easier to, you know, leave it inside and then do a test outside, rather than giving away the farm before we really know what the impact is.
I don't understand giving away the farm, though. I mean, if you're addressing this issue multiple times afterwards in multiple phases, and you're, and you're giving the report, I just don't see the over-cautiousness of all this.
Because he could still stay outside, he could still keep all that equipment outside, he doesn't, say he doesn't, the only leverage you then have is Phase 2 and Phase 3.
Well, I'd sure like to see, I mean, to me, if you, if you had an opportunity to see what it's like to operate outside, that could alleviate all these concerns. If you don't, now you're, you're going to rely on this paper report that may suggest that you can bring it outside, but really, what will it harm if there's multiple times, if it has wheels, if it doesn't comply, what would it harm, who would it harm by having it outside?
I'm not sure, you, you asked me a question, so I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're saying, so explain to me.
Well, he, he's saying that for this season, we're going to put it outside, and we're going to comply with the report, with the noise, report. They're going to do a report that's going to set the decibels, and if it complies, they'll, that's a, that's a contingency, right? So if it doesn't comply, then it goes inside. If it complies, then it goes, then it could stay outside, correct? That would be the, that would be the point.
Okay, so the first thing, the first, so the first phase of doing, determining whether somebody meets performance standards or not, is to look at the cut sheets of the equipment, okay? So then we get a complaint, you know, we do our best, we try to not over-regulate. So somebody brings this in, they say, well, this equipment should operate like this. Okay, then we get a complaint from a neighbor, he's going to be out there with a sound engineer. We get another complaint from a neighbor, he's going to be out there again, and he's going to be out there again, and again, and again. And we try to avoid that, that's what the harm is. If, if, I can give you examples, since I've been in here in Ojai, how many times I've had to, how many times business owners had to have a light engineer out there monitoring their lights, because there's incompatibility in the neighborhood. I'm just trying to not set up that same scenario for another business owner, that's all. If he wants to agree to do that, and that's on the books that way, I'm fine with it. I just wanted, my job is just to, to open the door, the book open, so you don't understand what these conditions can mean for a business owner and the neighborhood. So if we're going to say, what harm is it, it, we will put a business owner in a position of having to do repeated sound studies. That's what you're going to, because it's not going to just end with the equipment if it's, if it's noisy. We get complaints from neighbors, I'm going to say, well, I don't know how loud it is. I don't know. I mean, we have no information at all. So I'm, I, I can't anecdotally say, well, it's not loud to me, it has to be scientifically measured. That means that he's going to be out there measuring it. If that's what you want to do and you want to condition him, I'm fine with that.
Well, you already conditioned him in Number 6.
No, I'm saying that he, that, that's the first, that's the first phase in getting him. So we get a complaint from a neighbor who says, you allowed these to go outside, you said they're going to meet the sound requirements, and I say, yeah, he provided this that said he made the sound requirements, okay, but it's still really loud. You know, they're doing this and they're doing that. He has to go out and prove it, the burden is on him, not the neighbors. He'll be out there with a sound engineer, taking sound readings, because it's after the fact, and it just will continue to be after the fact, because we have no information right now. So that's the only harm. If he's willing to accept that unknown financial risk, then that's up to him.
Right, and that is not what I, Condition 6 is about? Prior to final approval, the applicant shall document to the city staff?
Right, I'm just saying, that's, that's what's going to happen, and so if he continues to operate, if he continues to operate the equipment and we get complaints, the burden will be on him, because, as I said, we have no documentation at this point. Right, and if he wants to accept that financial burden, and the unknown of how, of how he's going to do that, that's fine. It's, I'm just trying to say that normally, it's the other way around. He's providing us information, and while it might not be always 100% accurate, we have a window of, of, you know. And usually, when you have equipment like this, and you, you get the cut sheets and you know how loud it is, you can also ask, call the manufacturer and ask them, is there other things you can do to make it quieter? And there's things that we do before we present it to a planning commission. But you're right, it's, you know, it's his risk, or your risk if you want to put it on there, but, you know, staff spends a lot of time after the fact with conditions, and I was trying to make it clear that we can do things upfront, we don't always have to be, we can be proactive and not always reactive.
I'm, I'm still confused on why we need to make him go indoors and not, not, if he's going to test the noise level, and it's going to comply before he brings it outdoors.
Right, and the other issue that hasn't really been discussed is that this use is not permitted in the zone without the planning commission making a finding that it's not more objectionable than uses that are allowed in the zone. So you can't make that finding if you don't have all the information upfront.
Oh, well, it's common sense, but, sure. I mean, look at the auto, look at, I mean, there was things in there that made a lot more noise. I bought two pickup trucks from the car dealer there, and there was a lot of noise, a lot of trucks going back and forth and beeping and beeping, and I just can't imagine, anyway, there's, there's also common sense. So there are, there is reports, but you see, that, I'm not against, you know, him, I'm not against him complying, but I'm, I'm confused that we have a condition for him to comply. So why make him do, go indoors when we have a condition here? That's my question.
I guess then I.
That's what people were, that's what the other planners were proposing.
Right, well, you'd have to talk to them, but I guess what I would say is, we will be working this issue out at staff level with him, and he won't be able to open or do anything. You heard by his own admission that he's on a tight timeframe.
Right.
It is not advantageous for, for staff to put a condition on an applicant that then, instead of flushing things out or taking care of them at this level, we're doing it prior to getting a final. It is the most undesirable position to be in. Most political decision-makers don't like it when they get a call from somebody saying, I have this much capital outline, I have remodeled my building, I have done this, and this, and this, and now I've got a planner telling me I can't open. So that's the only reason we don't like to do it that way. It's not, you're more than, like I said, within your powers to, to make your motion, I'm only just trying to explain to you the ramifications, what happens, so that everyone is very clear how we get these things, how, how we get into these situations that sometimes are not to our advantage.
Okay.
Well, it seems like the applicant has a time crunch, and do we think that, it seems like if we get any further afield than what the original staff report said, that we're going to start talking about needing more information and having to continue it? And, I don't know, to me, it just seems like it's the expedient thing to do.
All right, so I'm going to, so I'm going to just, trying to move this forward, how about this, on Condition Number 5 where it says, noise levels from processing equipment shall meet the noise standards and regulations of the Ojai Health Code. Prior to the final approval, the applicant shall submit documentation to city staff, either in the form of a certified decibel reading of the equipment or manufacturer's product sheet indicating the decibel levels, and that they do not exceed the legal threshold standards, or move the equipment inside.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. That's just.
Do I get a hint of that?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. That, that's sensible, to me.
Okay. Does that mean we can have a motion?
Yeah, I think there was just one other issue that I think maybe for the commission to be clearer was the odor and the, the waste. Maybe Mr. Gary could just explain to the commission how it's processed and what happens with it, please, thank you.
So they, the grapes come in, and they're dumped into this hopper, they go through a sorting table, and the stems are pulled away from the grapes, and that, all that waste is, once again, isolated into container, that, that's one of the reasons for the height of these things, so we can have the container underneath to catch anything that comes out. That immediately gets hauled back up to my vineyard compost pile, gets spread out. So that's, I, I don't know that there's really much of a, of an odor from the grapes, really just being pulled apart from the stems. Then the, the other smell that would come out is when you press the wine, and, but this, this happens in a closed container, and so what, what comes out, once again, is the must, and that is really a dry, you know, all the wine has been pressed out, must is grape skin, seeds, and whatever else was, was in the wine. That comes out dry, and once again, also goes in a container that goes back up to replenish the nitrogen in the soil up there. So the, the only things that really would create the smell are, are these byproducts that, you know, are quickly taken back up to, to my vineyard.
So you're saying you'd be removing stuff from the site every day when you're?
During the crush.
During the crush, yeah. But I mean, it wouldn't stay on site more than 24 hours?
Right.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. Any, nor is that answer.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
I have.
I have one more question.
Okay.
What is weathered coral?
It's a nice pink color.
It's the same color as on the oaks.
Okay, that helps. Thanks.
I asked a question earlier, and I don't know that really got answered. The question that I asked was, if we decided tonight to go ahead and give you a conditional use permit with the equipment being indoors at this point, and when November rolls around and you provide all the reports on the noise and the odor and giving us a schedule of when the crush is going to be picked up and all these items we've been discussing, and let's say at that point, we just said, "No, it can't be outdoors." Are you willing to keep the whole operation so your business can go forward inside? Will that work for you? I mean, you've got the room, you can do what you need to do. I don't know that that was clear, made clear earlier.
Yeah, in phase two, by the time we give you phase two, we will know what the sound levels are and if it's required to be indoor or not. If it's required to be indoors...
That's on my question.
But what I'm saying is, if it has to be, if the sound levels are at a level that is not legal, we will design part of the remodel of phase two to enclose all that processing inside.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Staff would like to note also that, as the applicant said, he'd be removing the must and anything that comes out, I guess, from the de-stemming back up to his property. So staff would like to add a condition to the resolution that states that, that immediately after the processing takes place, any byproducts will be moved back to his...
That's what I was getting at.
Okay.
They'd be removed every 24 hours or something.
Okay.
Any byproduct.
You know, he said 24... He said immediately.
Yeah. I'm just saying 24 hours.
Be a little bit forgiving on either side, maybe 48 hours. I don't... I mean, however you guys, whatever you guys...
I thought you guys were being real strict about it.
Well, I am about the noise because, you know, I can see that being, you know, an issue in neighborhood compatibility. As far as, you know, I don't know. I mean, he said every day, and that's fine. I just don't... I want to make it practical, so I don't want to have staff out there having to look if it's gone every day. So, you know, as long as it's removed, you know, whatever.
Expeditiously.
Yeah, or within 48 hours, you know. I mean, just give them... I mean, I don't think that if he's starting crush, my idea... My... In my mind, I'm thinking crush time is probably a very active and busy time for him, and it might be occasionally. It doesn't get off every day, and I don't want to put him in violation. It's not my intent.
You might have said this earlier, and maybe it was in the staff report, you missed it. How many pounds would you be hauling or tons?
Just a couple tons a day coming in.
I mean, if you had to do it once a day or every 48 hours, is it like... Any idea? I'm just curious, is it like truck loads or a truck?
Oh, no, 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 no. That's... So we're a small boutique winery, and so, you know, we're getting lots of, you know, maybe two tons of grapes. That's the full grape. When you press that, you know, the juice is the part that weighs... So, you know, it just really gets condensed into small containers that can get put on the back of my pickup. I drive home every day. So, but I appreciate the 48 hours.
So you're talking about, in the back of a pickup, like three yards worth of waste-ish? Somewhere in that ballpark?
Yes, I mean, it's very minimal.
Okay, that's good.
All right. I need you to hear a motion on this. Do you want to go ahead and propose a motion? All right.
All right. I propose a motion, I'm proposing a motion, that we follow the conditions, adopt these addition... Conditions, excuse me. Let me find the right page. That's what I need to do. Would I be just calling this the revised project? Right, but I guess more... I was a little confused. Do I need to go for the conditional use permit? Or am I reading that it's a revised conditional use permit? Okay. I just knew that we had got the supplement, and then I think I know where I'm going. Okay. Right, I'll make... So that we adopt PC Resolution Number 14-05, approving conditional use permit CUP 14-01 and DRP 14-05, subject to the findings and conditions of approval, providing that the operation will be indoors for this phase, that we will adopt the revisions on conditions number five and number six, that we will get a schedule on hauling of the food waste, or the mast, as you called it. Let me see what else I had here. That the noise... Well, I guess that would be covered in number six about the noise. And I'd like to put in something about the odor. I'm not sure how to word that. A sec?
So, just to be clear, the motion is to adopt the resolution and conditions of approval to mean... So the conditions as written were for the processing to take place indoors?
And that's what I'm proposing.
Okay, but so then these revised conditions were for the processing to take place outdoors?
Okay, so that was my... I guess what I... All right, let me add that at the end of that date in November, I think you said it was the 15th, at that point, we would be supplied with the information regarding the noise or the sound, how you would... When you would be hauling, the odor issues, what does the... All the information on the equipment, the cut sheets. So I guess maybe you'd get those to us sooner. But also the screening for the fence, the landscaping and all of that. Do I need to say that, or does that... Am I making it more confusing?
So I would say you're going to adopt the resolution as originally drafted with an added condition that when the modification to the conditional use permit and design review permit come before the planning commission, again, the...
That information?
Information on noise, odor...
Hauling.
Hauling, cut sheets will be addressed, which presumably it will because at the later phase, we will be doing an initial review of the project under sequoia.
All right, should I start over?
Yeah.
Sorry, everyone.
I'm confused. I don't know.
You don't need to start over. We understand.
Can't you just say, "I make a motion as staff read into the record"?
Yeah, let's do that. It's so much easier. Okay, I'll make a motion as staff just defined the motion to move forward.
Does anyone want a second?
I'm still unclear. Can they operate outside?
No.
Okay.
According to what I just proposed.
All right. Does anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Is there discussion? Could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Lajowski? Zabella?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Hooray. Thank you. I really appreciate your patience with this process.
To operate indoors.
You might think this was the first CUP we granted in the history of the planning commission, but... So you're all set, as far as we're concerned. Thank you. And good luck with the winery. I hope it... Looking forward to it.
It does look like a great project, though.
All right, we can move along with our agenda then. We're into informational items, the director's report and director actions.
All right, so before you tonight is the director's decisions. I think I'm on the right page, am I not? And I would just like to point out that we had one that was assigned, and then the second one was a modification to the Ojai Rancho Inn, which was 40 square feet to an existing building. Modifications of a unit that was there, converting it into a bar for beer and wine. And the reason I'm just highlighting this is because this comes up often regarding the director's decisions and what is and what is not. This particular project was, although it shows up now because we've just approved it, was something that was in process back in fall under the previous interim director. And substantial decisions were made before I came here. And so I just want to make it clear that things of this nature, where it's an addition and adding change of use and with a... In connection with an actual addition in construction, I would not be doing it in a direction of director's exemption, and I would be bringing it forward. And I'm just saying that because I've been... This has come up a number of times in the meetings here of planning commission, and I just want to make sure that I'm trying very hard to make it consistent with what we would approve, what director's exemption would be approved and what has historically been in the past. And the reason that this one is of note is because it came before you just last year, and they have not completed a lot of their conditions from that previous design review. And so I just want to make it very clear that I was aware that they had still parking and some different things that they had under that approval, but that this was a separate issue. The termination was made that beer and wine was an ancillary use to the motel for motel patrons only, and that this modification of turning a unit into a bar really only required design review for the actual construction modifications that were made.
So they're not actually going to be opening a bar there? It's just going to be for use of the hotel patrons? Is that the idea?
That's the project description, yes. So they have on and off sale liquor. And so the issue with on and off sale liquor is that because it's a bar, it's restricted to 21 or over. But you can take a bottle of wine or a bottle of beer to your room, which becomes a de facto residence once you've rented it. That's just the way the law works. And you cannot open it and drink it inside your room. But they are forbidden for taking closed containers into the pool area. Anything that you're going to buy and drink, you can drink in your room or in the bar, and that's it. So just want to be very clear about, you know, where we're going in the future, and, you know, the intent was not...
So if somebody comes to the hotel from off-site, they're not staying there? They're not able to use the bar, is that...
Oh, yeah, they can go... If you had... If you're over 21 and you are visiting somebody who's staying there, you can go in and drink, as far as the ABC license is concerned. You go in there, you would have to stay inside the bar area, or go back to someone else's room. So the intent was not... The Rancho Inn has not applied for events. So there is no question on the... Before the planning commission or the planning department regarding events that are held there and the availability of liquor for those events. This was strictly as they proposed it ancillary to the bar. I mean, I'm sorry, to the motel. Okay? Do you have questions?
Do they hold events there?
We've had complaints that they do, and, yes, they have in the past.
They had a big event there around Christmas last year. That was actually pretty cool.
Yeah, and that one, they did, I believe, get a permit for, didn't they, Sherry, for that one? But they do have occasional musical events that are held there over the weekends that are sort of like what a lot of people are doing in Ojai now. They're sort of flash events, you know, like they're posted on the internet and people show up. They do have those. But they're not coming into the city for approval for those, and we only hear about them usually after the fact. So I think that's still in process at this point. But like I said, that the bar is strictly as it was proposed an ancillary use for the motel only. Okay, on the next...
Well, I got another question. So it seems like these... I mean, this is only the second meeting, but it seems like these hotel issues continue to come up. I mean, so what exactly, I guess, is the... What is the line between a director's decision and the planning commission's decision?
Okay, so the director's exemption is a ruling by the director that the project is exempt from design review. And there is some criteria in the code that spells out when it can be exempt and when it's... When, you know, the director can exempt things that are considered minor. And there's also, it says what doesn't qualify for design review, like single-family homes don't qualify for a single... So that doesn't require a director's exemption. So it obviously varies from whoever is sitting in the director's chair and their interpretation of what they feel to be minor. And I point out with the Rancho Inn that when they changed their sign program and their landscaping, that Rob Malane took that forward for design review. And then this one came in, and then it was, you know, processed early on as a director's exemption. So there is a little bit of difference of opinion by who sits in the chair. And so all I'm trying not to make a mountain out of a molehill. I'm just trying to let you folks know that I understand we're trying to be much more consistent now. And since the hotel had gone forward for design review, I would have made this go through for design review just to be consistent with what had been done with it before. If landscaping required design review, then a remodel and adding 40 square feet certainly should have, in my opinion. So I just want to make sure that you guys... Since this question has come up over and over again of where I'm trying to really correct criteria for what would be exempt. And like I said to the last meeting, one of the things that I exempted was somebody taking out two windows and putting two doors in. I mean, so the ruling from the city attorney was that an exemption is not a director's administrative review of project, but actually an exemption out of doing design review. And so I think that's one of the things that we would like to look in, review in the future is creating a policy where things that are minor are... An actual procedure for a director's design review where there would be noticing to the public. And the issue with a director's exemption is that it's exempt, and then the permit's issued. You know, there's no time for anybody to appeal, you know, because it's an exemption. So an administrative process for a director would be, depending on how it was adopted by city council, you know, after going through planning commission, would have some kind of wait period where a person would have an appeal process, and then you would issue the building permit. Or it would be appealable to the planning commission, and then planning commission to city council. So there would still be due process. So we're hoping that to move that type of idea forward, or maybe having the planning commission consider that, that things that could be minor but still need a certain amount of review, and we still feel that the public should have awareness that it's happening in their neighborhood, that we create that administrative process. So moving on, we have a list of the code issues here in our code enforcement list. And as I said before, you know, we're trying to walk a tight line between, you know, providing the public with the information that we can legally provide them with and still giving the anonymity to those that are involved in code enforcement. So I can answer very little additional information than is on the sheet, is what I'm getting at. So if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer some if I can. I see a light?
I just saw the rooster as a closed case.
Well, just let me explain about the roosters. We get roosters fairly often. The city of Ojai has very lenient rooster rules. It takes, what is it, Sherry, three people to complain? So if your neighbors are very tolerant of you having a rooster cockadoodling, you're not... And if only one person complains, we can't do anything. Years ago, there was more stringent rules, and somehow or other, I think Sherry would know better than I, how they got removed from the code. You know, as typical in most cities, it's you can only have... You can't have a rooster over so many months of age because that's when they start to actually do their loud little "good morning." But here in Ojai, that was removed. And so roosters are kind of something that we have a little bit of trouble with, and most often or not, we can't really do anything about it unless it's so obnoxious that everybody in your neighborhood wants to complain. And then, so the next item is your upcoming meetings. And as I said, I'm working on for June 18... I mean, I'm sorry. Yes, June 18. That is the next one, isn't it, Sherry? Neighborhood planning and a concept review for you for the Paradise... Yeah, is that what they're calling it? Anyhow, it's a... They're proposing a nine-unit townhouse project with... On the three lots that are adjacent to... Thank you, Joe's Quick Stop. So, and they're looking, it's a very creative project, I mean, it's a little bit outside the box. So it's, I'm trying to put the report together right now and it encompasses almost every regulation that we have in the city of Ojai, so it would be one is subdivision map, a design review, a conditional approval and probably a planned development permit and maybe even a density bonus. So you guys are going to have fun with that one. And then for July 2nd, I think Sherry's put this on here potentially canceled the meeting. We don't really have anything that we're working on for that meeting right now, but that isn't to say that sometimes we get things kind of at the last minute and we're asked to push them forward. So maybe we want to address either cancellation now or we can wait till the June 8th.
Nicklin will be out of town, Merk will be out of town.
Oh, I thought we had a quorum for that, no?
Anybody else be out of town? So two commissioners out of town.
Well, if we're not going to have a quorum, we probably need to just go ahead and cancel it than if it looks like we're not going to because then people just make their plans, you know. It's easier for everybody, just like, you know, there's not going to be enough there to have a quorum and, and I thought I had asked everybody, so you two are-
Send an email up.
I thought, but no, maybe not. Are you going to be here?
What day?
Yeah. It's whether or not you're really gone on the July 4th weekend, I think is the issue. Okay, and you are too?
Probably.
So you guys do what you want to do with that. I mean, if you want to wait or if you want to go ahead and cancel it, we're fine with that. Like I said, right now we have nothing on the books, so you won't be disappointing anybody. It's just that, you know, like this concept plan just came in the other day and we're, you know, they're anxious to go, so we try to accommodate as best we can, so we're moving people forward. And then July, I think we're still working on the landscape ordinance regulations and I think additional time was needed for that because of that unintended situation.
So if you-
Is that good for you, Lawrence?
Okay, we still have to get together and we both have been super busy, but we will.
And then just to let you know that on the Emerald Iguana Inn, so everybody understands, we have met with the, the city manager and I have met with, gone out and taken, assessed the situation at night ourselves and we are setting up and meeting with the neighbors. And so I personally contacted everybody who was on the list, on the petition list that was originally part of submitted into the city and we will be sending out via the 300-foot radius list, a notice of when we set the date to meet with the neighbors, to hear all their concerns and issues, to try to get it very much spelled out in a concrete way. So that is moving forward to working with the neighbors and the situation with the Iguana since everybody is talking about motels. So that will be coming forth.
Is that going to be an onsite meeting?
Out on the motel?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think, you know, we're, I don't think that was really considered. I think that they, I think that it's just a matter of really, you know, trying to get, everyone doesn't have the same issues, so in listening to them, there's, there's very few that lighting is the issue, mostly, it's mostly traffic and noise. So I don't think we need to go out there on the site for that, but, you know, I hadn't even thought of that so that, to be honest with you, but I think we're going to try to do it because there's a good number of them. I think it'd be easier to facilitate a meeting indoors, you know, to keep control and have people actually, you know, write down what their concerns are.
Should a member of the planning commission be there or should not?
I, I don't think that, that at this point, no, because, you know, you're still going to be hearing, these are matters that are still going to be coming before you and you need to, you know, stay neutral on it so that you can take action on them. But it's just an informational thing that we are working with them since that's kind of come up with the neighborhood situation. And other than that, I'll just go through the list really quickly. California Solar Electric, we've met with them this week and we're working out, they are incomplete, but there's also a lot of issues with that project. In particular, there are conditions that were from an old previous approval that need to be completed. And so it's a very complex issue for the gentleman and we're working with them and so it's moving, it appears as though it's moving slowly because it's just, it's just complex. Withdrawing his application? He may be withdrawing his application for the doors, but we're still, we're still having to work with him to complete approvals from previous years. So, and I think that's, the rest of them are kind of self-explanatory at this point. Let's see. But that, I just wanted to go on record as why some of these things stay on such a long time. And I guess that's it for, for, do I have something else I need to do here? I believe that that is it. And I'm open to any questions, if you have any questions about anything else we're working on or meeting with people.
All right, subcommittee reports?
Lawrence and I will resume.
Thank goodness.
Be ready for the 16th. And then the Complete Streets Subcommittee, we met today. And what we are actually working on or starting to work on right now is the public sector of neighborhood planning. So what we're doing is we're, because the public sector really is Complete Streets, that's the public right of way and everything that happens there. So we are going to be developing an outline of all the items that would fall under neighborhood planning and Complete Streets and we will come to you with that and hopefully get approval. I don't know if it's going to have to go to city council or not or somehow have that be a tool to work with as we move forward with neighborhood planning. So that's our latest and greatest thing that we're working on.
Thank you. And thank you again for all your work on that grant, which we did not get, but I still appreciate the work. And Mayor Strobel, the final event of the evening.
I really enjoyed the meeting this evening. All of, I can just crank out questions after questions regarding like the issue on tonight's agenda. And I always feel so clever about all the questions I can come up with, but I want you to know that over the course of your deliberations, you answered all of the ones I had, plus a lot I hadn't even thought of. So I really enjoyed your meeting. I am so, we are so fortunate to have such a group on our planning commission, I'm very pleased. As far as council, we're working on the budget right now and that's sort of as far as my mind will go right now. We have a meeting next Tuesday. Any questions you have for me?
I just noticed there's a lot of streets being repaved around town and I've never seen that happen before. Is there something special going on this year?
Now, there's some where I can tell you to look at the list, but off the top of my head, it's not there. But there, we do have a list. We are working through the streets based on the level of their, it's called a levels- The condition, the worst streets are being worked on first. So we have a five-year capital improvement program in progress, so you'll see this continue. And we've been successful in setting aside funds for the last three years and street improvement has been a, a high, remains high. It is a priority for the city council. We need our infrastructure and we need, we need it maintained. It went too many years, so it reached such a degraded level, it's just, I hate to think of alligators, but I can't tell you how many streets that I think of alligatoring and you know what that is on the, so, yes, you'll see ongoing street repairs. And there is a list of what we're working on at the time, I just frankly can't tell you right now where it is. Call Greg Grant.
I do, I do got to say Greg is, Grant has been doing excellent work. I know it's a lot to do right now, but-
But it will be ongoing.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our meeting.